So, thank you everyone for being here this evening. I've called the work session of Rock County Board of Education to order for this fourteenth day of November 2024. Appreciate everyone being here. We have tonight, as we prepare for our meeting, Mr. McDonald is en route and will be here at our six o'clock hour. Ms. Fowler is going to be joining us by phone and Ms. Stone is not going to be able to attend tonight. So, right now, it will be, it will be five of us, excuse me, seven of us will be joining, I'm not good with math, I apologize. Six of us will be, will be joining here in person. We've got Mr. McDonald and Ms. Fowler on our, on our speaker. So, what we'll do, as, as we normally do, we'll go through and review consent items that will be part of our consent agenda tonight. Again, board members, if, go through our consent items, if there's anything that, that we need to pull out for further discussion, if, if not, not, no pressure to think that we have to just consent these items through. If anything that, that needs to be, we need to have debate and discussion on, we'll pull that out, add that to our new business item when we come to that portion of our, our agenda. So, we'll go through, through the items tonight and cover those and make sure that we have a good understanding of, of what those items are and then we'll, then we'll proceed if there's anything else we need to cover. So, in your, in your packet for tonight, we started out, we had a, the minutes from our committee meeting on October tenth, was included in your packet, and also the minutes for the board meeting that was held on October tenth. So, any, any, anything that we need to discuss over those two, those two minutes as were presented to us, or is this something we can consent that they, they would be acceptable?
Can I make a motion with itself?
Okay, we won't, we won't motion, we just say, just say if you're, if you're good or you're okay.
I'm okay.
I'm good.
Yes, sir.
Okay. It seems we have consent on, on those. Then, next, we're, for, for this month, we just have two items for budget amendments. One is purposing of funds for the CTE Perkins Grant in your, in your packet. As you can see, that, so that's budget additional allocated awards for the purpose, from the Perkins program to fund professional development for teachers. So, so those monies would be allocated for, for the teacher development. And then, the next item in that, in those, on those amendments were regarding distributed funds that were not needed in other contracted services and other expenditure accounts. Those were sped support services and those were going to, to more specific items in that program. I give you the opportunity to speak on that if you, if you want to provide any clarification.
Yeah. You can see, there's descriptions for, on each one of these, down at the bottom, board members, you can see what is going on, where the funds are coming from and going to. But, in essence, in this case, we had special education funds and surplus in other contracted services and transportation, and we're shifting them into substitute teachers, or certified substitute teachers, for sped teachers, contracted private agencies, and some travel and in-service. So, just shuffling the money to where it's needed more within that department. The first was new money that came in, into the Perkins, into the Perkins account. So, we, we received an additional twenty-five hundred and forty-six dollars that, and this is just showing how it's being allocated.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a general question?
You sure may.
The first page talks about fund professional development for cheap, for teachers. Can you give me an idea of what does that look like? Is it conferences? Is it online?
More likely it would be if we bring a trainer in, and we do a lot of training in this room, a lot of, in special ed, for, for instance, might be restraint training, where we bring them in and teach them how to do proper restraints if necessary on students. That'd be one example of where we would bring in a contracted service to do that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Thompson would be the one that would kind of determine what training is needed in, in certain areas for those. And I guess if you have new substitute teachers or people coming in, some of that would, could be, go to bringing them up to speed on, on various things that need to be.
Right, those things could be connected in the sense if we need to pull a teacher out to do some training, we need a substitute to go in that class for the day. So, sometimes those things are connected.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one quick question, to kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Smith said. Do we have anybody in house that is trained to do the restraint training for those special needs in those behavioral classes?
Yes, there are people in each school that are trained, there are principals that are trained, and special educators that are trained throughout the district.
No, I, I guess I should have rerouted it a different way. Do we have anybody in, in the system who can teach that as far as the restraint training?
Yes, we have some individuals that can train on certain techniques. There are some, some folks that have to come in and be trained from people from the outside.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
All right, good questions, good questions. Any other, anything else on our, on our, the budget amendments for tonight? All right, so, then, that would lead us into our budget, budget report. And Mr. Smith, give you the opportunity to speak to that.
Sure. As I will probably do every time I get this opportunity, I want to thank Mr. Markham for the great work that he does. Just a few highlights here. FY25 revenues are ahead of the same period last year by roughly five hundred thousand dollars. We've seen slightly higher collections in taxes and from the state, but the vast majority of the increase is due to closing the Education Capital Projects Fund and moving that three-hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the general purpose school fund. However, overall, we're meeting or slightly exceeding expectations on revenue. Salary benefits are up compared to last year, but in line with our expectations. Utilities continue to be higher than last year, but we appear to be leveling off and getting back on track. Electrical, excuse me, electricity expenses decreased when comparing to October twenty-four to October twenty-three by about five thousand dollars. And finally, capital outlay expenditures continue to be less than the prior year. We have projects in the pipeline that just haven't risen to the level of financial recognition yet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Any questions regarding our, our budget or our financial report? Okay, then, if not, we'll move down to the, the policy report. So, we are, policy fifty-three ten, that is coming up tonight. This will be our second reading, and that was consider, consideration of adding President's Day to our vacation, our vacation schedule. And this would be for non-licensed teachers or individuals. So, that would be coming up and so, with the second reading tonight, unless that needs to be pulled out for, for further discussion, then that will, that will be adopted after, if, if the, if our consent agenda is, is agreed upon. And also, we, getting into our policy review, policy review of sec, policy section two, just want to thank everyone for, for the effort going into this. My intent for this exercise that we, that we go through and we can provide some evidence as a board that we're, we are using, that we are reviewing our policies. And so, this is just a way that we can document some of that. And so, first of all, does anyone have any questions about the process of how we're, what, what my ask is of, of you as we go through this?
I do, I do want to say one thing, Mr. Young, Mr. Chairman. It, it's been refreshing for me to be able to see some of the policies that I might not have really taken a look at and took an in-depth look at those. So, it's been good for me to be able to, to sit down and read those and, and understand exactly what, what our board is supposed to be doing, what we, what we're doing well, and maybe what we can improve on. So, appreciate your time and assigning those to us. And that's, it's been, it's a real help for me.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
I do have one question. Are, are you looking for us to propose changes to policy that we've reviewed, or, back to your original comment, that there's evidence that, one, we're doing this, but also, if one of the policies says, here's what you have to do, here's the documentation that shows that evidence?
So, that's, that's a fair question, I think, a relevant question. I appreciate you bringing, bringing that up. Kind of going through this first time, and with somewhat of new board, I think, one, this is good for us all to become more educated, and especially for some of you new board members to, to get educated. But, as Mr. McDonald said, also, it gives us all the opportunity to go back and, we're not trying to eat the elephant all at one time. We can look at, you know, specific policies and, and focus on that. What I would ask, and my thought as us, as preparing for this, what, what are our next steps with this? My, my intent is to go back and review your comments on section one and section two, and look and see if there's something that somebody puts out and says, hey, we need to, we need to look at this. For, for example, I looked at policy twenty-eight oh seven, and it says, the board designates personnel for making requisitions. To me, I read that, it's kind of vague. It said, we, we designate personnel for, for making requisitions. I guess by default, that would fall to the director, but then I also know that on some things, you might have administrators that, that go through the process of making requisitions. And then, Mr. Markham also has a, a method in which he goes and has to make requisitions for, if it's a capital project, you know, there'd be various, various steps that we would take for that. So, it would be, some of it would depend on the purchase. But, looking at that, just looking at the policy itself, I read it and it's like, well, is that something that we need to maybe provide a little bit more clarity before in the policy? So, I think that, to answer your question, the, we're probably, my thought on this is that we probably need to go through a couple of sections and say, all right, we may need to allow more time in a work session like this to, to say, okay, let's go back specifically through policies one, it's policy two, and, and, and focus on those and say, okay, ones that may be highlighted, say, review. And, and what we, what I could do is I could go back in and say, you know, designate a policy. If you, if you reviewed it, you, now that you've got, have gone through this and you've looked at your notes, we could come back and say, let's highlight this for, for work session discussion. Just to, just to, just to see if that, because, you know, when, for, for example, I put that note down regarding, you know, that, that language, and it could be that, you know, our director says, well, that's covered this way. And we say, well, you know, does that merit a policy change? And going through that process, it, it might, but then it might be clarity and we have discussion, it was just the way, my interpretation of it, and, and collectively, we could say, no, we understand what that language means. So, so yeah, why don't, why don't we expect this? I'll go back in and add a column, say, you know, if you feel like that this is something that we want to have further discussion on, we can do, depending on the volume, we could do that in a setting like this. Usually, there, there would be time would allow for that, and we could have that discussion. But, having that designated gives us the opportunity to prepare for it, you know? And, so we know coming in here, we're not just going, well, do we look at, you know, the first one, the second one, or the fifth one? Well, we kind of have that designated out, so. As student representatives, as you went, went through it, what was your, your take? Did you have questions? Did you?
I guess I, I was like, I was really trying really hard to like, understand it the best that I could, especially being that it's like all these big budget things. And I'm like, oh my goodness, I would never, ever had to really, like, look at something like that.
I have a little bit more experience in it, because I've been in the board for a little while, talking about budget. So, I understood it a little bit more, but it was still hard to connect everything, I suppose you could say. Also, we were really confused on what exactly our task was to do with it.
Okay, yeah, no, I understand.
We, we read it, we went over it, we were like, now, now what, what do we do now?
So, so, what we, one of the things, and I think I've, I've said this in, in, in the past, is when you look at policy and, at supporting evidence that, that's being done, a lot of these policies, you may not, you may not be able to, it may not, that evidence may not happen until a situation arises. But, but there are some things that, you know, when a, when a shall statement shows up, you just like to make sure that it's being addressed either through procedures, is that what we would call policies and then procedures, through procedures that may be handled administratively? And so, that's why I'm looking at the shall statements, is that what shall, the board shall do this or that, and just saying, okay, I noticed that there was a shall statement there. Do we, you know, kind of find some evidence? Would ask Mr. D for some clarification, say, hey, how is this handled? And it may be something that say, well, that comes back and say, no, that's a board. And so, we come back and ask ourselves, board, how are we handling that? You know, so, so we can't, we can't just pass everything down to director and administrators. There may be some things that, for example, you know, designating a, someone for, that's, that oversees procurement for making a purchase requisitions, you know, have we, does that, one, does that language say what really needs to happen? And then, two, are we, are we following through with it? That answer, provide a little clarity?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think, one, that we could probably use it as a, as an example, it says, the board shall conduct an annual evaluation of the director of schools. So, that, that to me says, that's a board, a board item that we have to do, and we can show evidence that we have done that every year. I think that one was one of mine that I reviewed, and, you know, I think my comment was, this is something that we're doing, but I think it's something that we need to revisit and review about the make, the mechanism of which we're using. That's it. I mean, that's just my example of, of a shall statement that the board would be doing.
I, I think that's, I think that's, that's a, that's a good, good example. The, and Mr. McDonald, you also on, on our policy twenty-eight oh two, you identified that as a policy with, with a major overhaul since move to direct deposit on a monthly basis.
That's right.
So, you, that's one you identified that I would tag as, okay, we need to have some board discussion on that, that policy. So...
And maybe, maybe something that you could put in that, that we could highlight, you know, if we had something that we could, you know, highlight that column or that row or whatever, and that would bring it out and say, oh, we need to look at this one. That might be some other task that you could put on, you know, there that we could do whenever we see it needs a major overhaul. Okay, well, let's do this, so every other board member sees it, and it brings it out and says, we need to look at this one in more detail.
Yes, and so, I'll tell you what I'll, what I'll do right now for, and you can watch if you're on, on the, on the screen. I want to put, recommend discussion. We can put, I'll put that in as a, as another column, and you just put, if you just put a, a yes or, yes or no in that, in that column, then that way, when we come to a meeting like this, then we can say, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss, we're gonna discuss that, or we, you would like to discuss that particular policy. Does that, does that make sense, that accomplish what we want to accomplish?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I've gone through this exercise myself through our policies and created my own spreadsheet once upon a time that I, is a living document. But, I named it a policy action list, or a policy action spreadsheet, because every time I see a shall statement, it necessitates an action by somebody. And it may be the board shall, which is something the board's responsible for, and I have a column for that, or it says the director shall, and I have a column for that. the Director shall, and I have a column for that. So, it, every shall statement means someone has to act and do something. Some of the policies are just stagnant, they say, these are our holidays, but if it says shall, that means some action has to be taken. So, and then the procedures describe that action. So, a procedure that corresponding, goes with that corresponding policy and describes how we carry out that action. So, so anyway, if that helps, you know, just think of every time you see shall, that means somebody has to do something, who is it, and then the procedure spells out how that's done.
No, thank you, and, yeah, we haven't, we haven't talked about that in, in a bit, and you started that very early, and as I recall, and when we started talk, having this discussion about Board responsibilities and, and shall statements. So, so that is being done, and maybe, maybe that's something that we can link out to, if people link to, so they can review it or run a PDF of it and send that out.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, I know TSBA just had a recent overhaul of their entire policy, policy section on their website. If you look at those, it gives hyperlinks at the bottom of each one that has a state law, TCA, TCA code annotated attachment to it, you can, you can hover over that, and it'll take you directly to the TCA website to show what needs to be done on those, and, and we could probably do that with our procedures as well.
So, you're saying they're hyperlinking on the policy, or they're hyperlinking?
No, if you look at the policy, if you, if you can find one that's got something at the bottom, you can hyperlink on the number, if it's number one at the top, and it, you know, refers to the bottom of the page, I think if you click on that, it'll bring up another little box on there that will actually show you the TCA code that goes with what is there.
Okay, but that's-
Maybe I can show you, maybe I can show you when I get there.
Yeah, no, that would, that would be good. I, I think that would be helpful resource too, because, yeah, if they can take you right to the legal references or, or cross references, those, those, those hyperlinks can come in very handy.
And that was part of TSBA's policy to be ADA compliant, and visually, and, I guess, hearing compliant, so that they have an opportunity, somebody who has those disabilities can still hear the policy read to them, or it can be in the font that they needed to be, and that was just part of their, part of their policy upgrade.
Okay, good, that's good, good to know. Ms. Fowler, I don't want to forget you being on the phone as well. Do you have any thoughts and comments on how we're approaching our policy review?
Now, sometimes I think it's a little confusing in there, I have to agree, but I think some of them do need to be looked over. So, I do like this suggestion of putting it where like, that we need to review it, yes, or however you said, put it in there, where we can put a check mark, or X, or whatever we need to in there, where we can actually review it in one of our work sections.
Okay, yeah, I've put, so I've just added a column in there, said, recommend for discussion, and so as you go through there, and if you think the policy's, actually, yeah, I'll give you, I'll give you the opportunity, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to, to make a, make a, a clear distinction there of whether you think that we recommend this policy for discussion, or a yes or a no, so, so that way, ask you to, to put in one of the two, or either or, so that way, we know, we have clarity on, on what, that it wasn't just overlooked.
That sounds good, I think.
Okay, so, so we'll start... So, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a, a recommendation, and, you know, we have six sections of policy, and so we go throughout the remainder of the year, we'll, we'll still have plenty of time to, to, to cover the entire policy review. I want to recommend that, now that we've had a little bit more discussion about what this exercise is all about, that we go back and just look at the, the policies that were assigned to us in, in the first, the first two sections, and go back and say, okay, on that particular policy, did, do I think that there needs to be discussion there, and maybe we can, next work session, we can start the process of looking at some of these policies and, and having, having a little discussion to see if that, if they need to be raised to, to the point where we modify or, or, or adjust, so that we can, we can, we can have that as part of our, our December objective. Everybody be in agreement on that? I don't want us to get halfway through, or almost finished, and say, well, what, I reviewed that policy back in October, what did I mean by that? So, okay. All right, well, again, I appreciate your, your efforts on those and, and reviewing those. So, get back to, to notes here. So, having covered our policy, the next thing in, in our consent is maintenance, maintenance report that I'm showing. All right. I'm missing something?
No, it's, there you go.
Okay, all right. Yeah, scroll on down, I think this is, well, let me back up. So, the maintenance report, I think is, are we including, are we saying our facilities maintenance checklist assessment, that? So, all right, so on your standard, the items D and items J kind of go together, because each of, what we, what you have in your packet is a, a report of all eight of our facilities, excuse me, nine of our facilities, and doing a maintenance checklist, and I'm going to suspect that Mr. Alley went through and, and put that information together for us, and so basically, what you're seeing in that report is you're doing an exterior evaluation, interior evaluation, looking at the two key components of any facility that, that you want to make sure you have, have covered, and that's your, your, your electrical and, and your, your, your climate control and your, and your, and your plumbing, also in just in the cafeteria areas and, and the, the interior painting. And so, what you're, you'll, you see is our, our checklist, and which we're gonna, gonna look at this as our assessment for our annual assessment of these facilities as well, and it touches based on all the, all the facilities that we have in our, in our campus. So, I give you the opportunity, you, Mr. D, and, and Mr. Alley too, if you, anything you want to share with us about these reports, and, and this is the first time I've seen it, so I'm going to tell you that this is something new, or is either new to us, or maybe it's something you've been doing all along.
It's a, it's something Mr. D asked me to do, and I went to, or checked every school, just basically as if you were someone from the outside coming in and saying, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, you know. Also got with most of the principals and, worked over some of the things that they felt like needed to be done. So, each, each paper has, or has a school, and then what I did do is put a dollar amount to it. I didn't know if you knew that or not, but, you know, I do have dollar amounts that I can add to this, like tomorrow, and Mr. D can send it out too.
Now, when you say dollar amounts, you're talking about proximate costs for estimates for, I guess these would be internal good faith estimates based on experience?
Yeah, with the, with the, most of this, we've experienced most of these prices in the last few years, so we've got a good idea of
Okay.
where we're at. Some of them, you know, like, you think this is a $50,000 deal, it's $106, sometimes.
Right.
You just don't ever know.
Yeah, especially in today's climate. So, D, you want to, anything you want to add to that?
No, I appreciate this was one of those shall statements, and we were supposed to present this to the Board as a report, an annual assessment of facilities, and so I appreciate Mr. Alley putting this information together. I would like to look at moving forward and getting something in our procedures that's more of report form, and so that's something that's more systematic that we can put in there, and I'll work with Mr. Alley, and we'll come up with something that it would be, you know, consistent and constant from year to year with, with this type of information, but, but I appreciate him putting this information together for you, and you, as you can see, you can go through, building to building, and see what the needs are, and within that list, we then prioritize the things that are mission critical and those that can, that can wait for some time, so I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Board members, y'all have comments?
Just a question, roof was in each one of these reports, is there a standard number of years that you replace roofs, or?
We try to get the 20 or 25-year warranty on our roofs now, but what that warranty covers is the manufacturer part, you know, not somebody coming back out to fix it, but we try to do that, so truthfully, at 20 years, you need to start looking to replace a roof, but they, they do last a long time.
How did you arrive at your score? Like, 80 out of 100, or?
Just thought it up in my head. Well, you know, you try to figure out, you know, each school, I, I kind of went on a baseline of, I feel like this school is 90% complete, or 95% renovated, you know, we're looking at every, every building in, in our system besides Finley is needing to be renovated, so kind of, kind of went on that as to what I felt like still needed to be done in each school.
Comments? Mr. McDonald, Ms. Hoffman?
I'm good.
Second, Ms. McGill? Ms. Fowler, do you have any comments on, on our facilities assessment, assessment of facilities?
He may have mentioned this, and I may have not heard it, because I can't hear it that good, and I understand, because he's away from the mics, but when we do these, can we do it, like, what is the priority with each school? Did he mention that?
No, I do not have the priority, and that's something that we can do, and, and that normally goes in our five-year plan, the priority of, of what we want to do in the next five years, so we'll take this and, and check out the five-year plan and, and do that as a priority, but I can do this, you know.
No, I was just kind of curious if, say, I was trying to look at one right here, maybe I'm at the high school here, let me see. Yes, so at the high school, like, some of it that it needs, I was trying to go through that real quick, so I'm not holding everyone up.
What I would say, Ms. Fowler, as you're looking there, is a little that is subjective as well, you know, what, we have conversations with myself and the principal each year at the end of the year, and then as we go into the summer, what our projects would be, we discuss that as a team and try and determine what is most critical. You know, if you ask a classroom teacher, or a cafeteria worker, or a principal, you might get three different answers about what is the most important thing that we need to do. So, we meet during budget time, and we have that discussion with principals, and Mr. Alley's at that table, and, and financial folks, a lot of folks at that table, to talk about what are the most critical needs. So, we try and get a consensus on that and prioritize them at that time.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to, to go toward right there, like, whether it be the, you know, chem lab is number one priority, and then trophy cases, or electrical, or however, that's what I was going for. Thank you, Mr. D.
Yes, thank you.
I think, just my thought on, okay, from Board, what do we do with this information? I, I, I don't think we should be responsible for prioritizing what the needs are. I think, as, as Mr. D pointed out, that should be done at administrative level, along with Mr. Alley and from maintenance, maintenance side. But what I think we should do with this information is be prepared to say, okay, when we look at a five-year plan, or that we're, we're informed, we have something to go back to, if we, and if there's a special need, or if something comes up and Mr. Alley says, hey, you know, we need to, we need to replace a boiler, for example, or we're having some boiler issues, we've got something to go back to and said, well, yeah, in 2024, we saw that that was going to be an issue, or, you know, we replaced that in 2023, you know, shouldn't the manufacturer, what can be done. So, just to try to give us something to go back and stay in line with all that goes on in, in managing facilities like what we have, so. So, I appreciate very much you putting that together, and Board members, I hope you find that helpful and informative to you. So, we'll go back in our files, if you, if you would, continue on. Is there anything else on our maintenance slash assessment of facilities reports? Okay, if, if not, then we were provided a thread, excuse me, the school reports, those were not included in our packet for this month, and so we will make sure that we try to get, get that done, and that information to you for, for next, next week, next month. If, if there's something regarding schools that, that need to be brought to our attention, give Mr. D the opportunity to, to address that in, in his district update. Budget report, we've covered that, I guess we got into budget amendments and transfers and kind of put the, the budget report in, in line with that, so we, since we've covered that. Then, TLN report is... So, Ms. Douglas, was there anything from the, from the Delgan Assembly that, that you found that we wanted, might want to be aware of?
Well, it was a learning experience, it was a lot of information, and they did say that our local government, our state representative, and our senator would be good contacts to have, and that, you know, we would need to call on them. And then, of course, I think everybody's heard on the news about the US Department of Education, might be some changes there, so we'll, we'll see how that, we'll have that. But as far as the report, they're not in session, and our TSBA person said, you know, just wait on it, then.
Okay.
That would be coming up, same.
But as far as TSBA goes, they do, they did finalize their platform for going into the legislative session.
Yes.
And so, that, we got to experience that this past, past weekend, so they'll, they'll be ready to go and speak to our legislators on our behalf, from the services they provided. I think one thing, Mr. D, you can bring this up if you want, in, in your, you have a hard copy packet with you this evening, and that's just a legislative agenda from TOS, which is Tennessee Organized, Organization of School Superintendents. There's information there, I give you the opportunity to speak to that if you, if you'd want.
Yes, I got to be a part of the TOS Executive Committee this week, as well as being at TSBA, and just wanted to have some information of what we discussed there. TOS and TSBA work a lot of hand in hand, going into legislative session especially, but just wanted you to see what their stance was as far as their legislative agenda, what they're going to focus on, the key points that they are for and against, and then also, there's information about their lobbying group that they, they solicited information to work specifically on vouchers, and their stance on vouchers, to get information there, and then their annual information on superintendent salaries, so just information, for information purposes only, I just wanted to see where TOS was on those things.
Okay, so, that information's provided to you, some of that being legislative in nature, so good time to bring that up and can study, and if there's anything- And if there's anything coming out of that that you'd like to see further discussion on, maybe in the work session or in our, in our full board, certainly bring that, bring that up and we'll get that on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, the, the number of items on here is substantially greater than what T S B As. Is that typical?
It's just based on what they anticipate coming and what we've already dealt with in the past. So, just in case some of those bills come back up and some of those, on the, on the floor, they want to be prepared and their stance.
Gotcha.
All right. So, as we wrap up our session, we included in your pack, it was a threat assessment report for the month. You see that there were, were two, that there's finding there's, there were no threat and those were closed out administratively. Then, you go into personnel report and you can see that there were, there are a few hires that were, that were done in the month of October and you see the personnel changes that took place in the, in the month of December, excuse me, October. So, any questions on those reports? Ms. Fowler, just wanna make sure that I am not leaving you out or if there was anything that I've overlooked you on.
No, sir, no, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. All right, so, so, so our consent agenda tonight will, unless anyone objects, it'll be the approval of our, our minutes from October, our budget amendments and transfers, second reading of the addition of President State to our Vacation Day policy. We are reviewing sections two, we have, have reviewed that and we're, we'll be doing a, a review of, a discussion of, of sections one and two policies that, that we've reviewed and we, if we wanna have discussion on, we'll work that in for next, next month. We had a maintenance report, no school report, we did have a budget report, T L N, we did not have a T L N report, the threat assessment report, personnel reports and assessment of facilities. So, consent agenda will just be signifying that we did review those and we're all consented that, with those for our approval. So, when you look at our meeting for our agenda for tonight, there is one new, new business item that was, that was added. The White County High School banned fundraiser, they have a, a change request. So, that was, that was sent to us. They're not asking for an additional fundraiser, but they are asking to change one of their fundraising items. So, that was, unless there's objection, that will be on, considered a new business item. And then, and then tonight, we're gonna have the opportunity to, to celebrate those that have served our, our board and our district in the past honoring the families of the late Mr. Kenneth Robinson and Richard McBride and, and their families tonight. And then we're also gonna have the opportunity to recognize former board members and so we'll be doing that as part of, of tonight's agenda. So, any, any parting comments, thoughts, questions? Okay, well, we'll call our, our work session adjourned and then we will reconvene at six o'clock. All right, thank you.
Welcome everyone to the November fourteenth meeting of the White County Board of Education. If you would, please rise and Ms. Joy McGill is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McGill. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone for their attendance tonight. We have special guests in our audience and we appreciate you bringing, being here tonight. We have special, special items on our agenda that look forward to, look forward to getting to in the course of the night. I thank for our staff to come and be, be a part of this, this meeting tonight. Tennessee Code Annotated in Board Policy fourteen hundred says, states that every meeting of the board is open to the public except where law allows a closed session. The agenda for the board meetings are posted on the district's website at white counties, at whitecoastschools.net at least three days prior to each meeting. Each meeting agenda by law includes an item reserved for public comment. A sign up sheet has been made available prior to the beginning of the regular meeting. Individuals who have signed up prior to the start of the meeting to speak will be recognized in the order listed on the sign up sheet at the point in the agenda designated for public comments. Board meetings are streamed with the help of Warrior Media for live or recorded viewing. Links are provided on the district's website. Attending and/or speaking during tonight's meeting implies consent for the comments and appearances to be used in this manner. So, we, without out of the way, again, have a, a, an agenda tonight that we're going to be able to, to recognize some people that have contributed to our, to our district and their service and so we'll look forward to getting into that. So, but at this time, before we go any further, we need to have a disclosure of conflicts of interest. So if there's anyone on the board that has, might have a conflict of interest on the agenda items that are being presented tonight, please let it be known at this time.
Mr. Chairman, as I do with each and every meeting, no conflict of interest tonight on anything on the, on the agenda. Just want to make it known that my wife is an educator in the system and the, the things that you'll hear me talk about tonight are my views, my views only and are in the best interest of the students first and then the faculty and staff of this district.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, my spouse is an employee of the district, but my opinions and my decisions are my own.
Thank you, Ms. Officer.
To round us up, my staff, my staff, my wife, she's not a staff. I don't call her and watch her.
Did you get that?
My, my wife, my beautiful, beautiful wife.
Well, he's laying it on thick tonight.
Is a staff member at the high school, but my comments tonight are mine.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. So, Ms. Sims, let it be stated in the minutes that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Officer, and Mr. Smith all indicated they have spouses working at the district, but nothing on the proposed agenda would constitute a conflict for them. So at this time, we will move on to our next agenda item and that is the approval for the agenda for tonight's meeting. So board members, you've been given a review of the agenda for, for tonight's meeting. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of this, of the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. In our consent agenda, we reviewed the minutes from our, that was held from our October meetings, budget and transfers. There were two items that we, that we reviewed at that time. This will be in our policy. We have consideration for the second reading, the approval of addition of present state to our policy fifteen, fifty-three-ten, which states our vacation days and paid, paid holidays. So that's our second reading for that policy tonight. We had a, a maintenance slash facilities assessment report. We also reviewed, did a, had our budget report, our monthly threat assessment report, and our personnel report. Those were items that were on our consent agenda. So with consent, there was, there was nothing in those, those items that the board felt needed to have further discussion. So as consent item, we will not need a motion or a second. We will just need approval for votes. So all those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That brings us back down to our next item on the agenda. Several months ago in our previous board, we had, it was brought to our, for consideration that we do something special honoring some members who have, who had recently passed that we had had the privilege to serve with on this board. It was, Mr. McDonald brought forth consideration for the board to rename the, the board, our boardroom in honor of Mr. Kenneth Robinson and Mr. Richard McBride. The board passed that, passed that unanimously and in the course of that, we have, have put on the, the doors leading into this room a plaque with the signifying this, it's the Kenneth Robinson, Richard McBride boardroom. And we also have identification here in the boardroom that is, that states that as well. This dedication in, of the board is in, in, in honor of Mr. Robinson and Mr. McBride. And they were esteemed board members that were, that made valuable contributions to our school community and they dedicate, their dedication to excellence, commitment to education will forever be remembered. And the newly named Robinson McBride boardroom will serve as a lasting tribute to their leadership and vision. And it is our hope that this space will inspire future generations of leaders to uphold the values of integrity, compassion, and dedication that Mr. Robinson and Mr. McBride embodied. And together, we will honor their memory and continue to strive for excellence in, in education in their memory. So we have a proclamation tonight that, that I would like to, like to, to read. But I would, if the representatives' family would join me at the, the board and we will, we will read the proclamation and then we will have a moment for, for interest. So the proclamation says, "By the White County Board of Education, whereas the White County School Board has been profoundly blessed by the dedicated service of its members whose commitment to the educational well-being of our community has been unwavering and exemplary. Whereas Mr. Kenneth Robinson and Mr. Rich, Richard McBride, both esteemed members of White County School Board devoted their time, talents, and energies toward advancing the quality education and fostering a supportive environment for students, teachers, and staff alike. And whereas their service was marked by compassion, wisdom, and enduring commitment to the ideals of education, their contributions have left an indelible mark on the fabric of, of our community. And whereas it is fitting and proper to honor their memory and recognize their significant contributions by perpetuating their legacy through a lasting tribute. And whereas the naming of the space that embodies the spirit of dedication and service will serve as a reminder of their enduring impact on White County School Board and the countless lives they touched. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the White County School Board that the boardroom within the White County School District shall be henceforth named the Robinson and McBride Boardroom. Be it further proclaimed that this is, this naming honors their memory and serves as a lasting testament to their exemplary service and dedication to the servant, students, and educators of White County. May this space continue to inspire and guide future leaders in their pursuit of educational excellence." So to the families of Mr. Robinson and Mr. McBride, say thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening. And we hope that this, this dedication, this boardroom, name of this boardroom shares what we, what both men did for, we feel did for our, our school and our districts. Thanks, White County. Scut you this way a little bit and we'll get, run right up the screen. Thank you. So, no, we have, we have several former members of the board that have served with both Mr. Robinson and Mr. McBride and had the privilege to serve alongside them. Ms. Donna Jones is here with us this evening, Ms. Kay Prater as well. Mr. McDonald, I know that you served with, with, with both as, as, as so did I. But I would like to give board members opportunity, and former board members opportunity to speak if they'd like.
I, I do want to say something and I want to thank both families. Kevin and, and Candy, I appreciate both of your, your, your husband and your dad, Kevin, that they poured so much into me. I just felt like it was something that we needed to honor them. It was so tragic to lose Kenneth the way we did, just being reelected. But, you know, Richard was always the, the epitome of a professional. You could call him with a budget question and he could, he could rattle numbers off better than anybody I know and, and I appreciate that. That helped shape me and mold me into the board member I am today and same with Kenneth. I, I loved both of them and I'm just honored I got to serve with them and, and honored I get to see this boardroom named after those two fine gentlemen. Y'all both had great, great men in your lives and these kids I know are sad that their dad's gone, but I know that they, they have memories to look back on and same with you, Kevin. So thank you for sharing, sharing him with me and sharing him with this, this county and this board, so.
Do I have to stand up to say something?
No ma'am, Ms. Jones, you, you do, you do not.
I'm not any taller standing than I am sitting. I had the pleasure of serving on the board with both these fine gentlemen. And I can honestly say without a doubt in my mind, they were two of the finest men I have ever known.
Absolutely.
And it was just my honor to serve with them. And like they said, Kenneth was just steadfast in everything he did and wanted to do for the county. And Richard was probably one of the most intelligent people I've ever known in my life. So thank you for asking.
You never had to know, you never had to wonder where you stood with either one of them and where they stood on an issue. And that's what I loved about them. That was, that was always, it was, that was, that was a great part of them, of them being on this board.
Thank you all for doing this. You have all covered everything that I haven't. But I will say that Kenneth was always a man of few words, but when he spoke, it was like yeah, put it everybody knows.
Absolutely.
And like she said about Mr. McBride, he, he was amazing. He was a very smart man. And I learned a lot from both of them. I enjoy being with them too because you never knew what's going to happen.
Strong bar and comments?
Yeah, just, I would echo all these comments. I mean, just what a pleasure to work with both those gentlemen over the years and just the wisdom that they instilled in me and, and offered me as a, as a director and guidance they provided. And not just to me, but to our whole district. Just exemplary board members and just exemplary men. And so it's, it's a pleasure to, to know them both and share in your loss. But we hope that this, that we'll be able for years to be able to say to people what these names represent and they represent the greatness of their lives and what White County Schools is all about.
Buddy else like to comment? Families, would you like to, anything you would like to say?
Just thank you. I'd like to say, go ahead.
Oh yeah.
How much the board meant to my dad.
Yeah.
I mean, we still have notebooks of.
All the papers.
Oh yeah. So I think we're still moving, but he just was so detailed. I remember coming to here to a meeting with him one time and just, and very impressed with the amount of detail and just, yeah. He'd ask my question and he'd answer it. And he thought, he thought about it before time. So, and I know all of y'all meant a lot to him.
I would say he still has a copy of the policy manual that Donna Jones handed off to me when I came on the board and now it's all right here in front of us, so.
Oh yeah, he's still going, yeah.
Yeah.
Really.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did.
Well, I, I would say I had the privilege to serve with, with both men and I, I was always impressed by the seriousness in which they took their, their role here in the school board and their dedication and their love for, for the, for the community. And I think they would, I think they would both be pleased to see that now, from a board standpoint, we have, we have a younger generation that's, that's having the opportunity to serve with us because I think at the, in both their hearts, they ultimately, they wanted to touch the lives of, of the students to help prepare them for, for citizenship in, in our county. And so that was something that was unwavering in both of them. And I, I certainly found it a privilege and a pleasure to get to know, to know, know both. So thank you to the families for being here tonight and we hope every time you come to the fair, you can think about this boardroom and how it was, and, and this room being, being named in their memory. So thank you very much. So, so next, we're, we're not finished with our, our, our board recognition. We, every two years in, 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 in our, our district, we have potential for, for changeover in boards. And when that happens, we have board members that, that become former board members. And we do not want to, we don't want to just fail to recognize their contribution to our, our community and their service to, to the district. The, tonight we have, we will be recognizing Ms. Diane Hasten, Mr. Adam Hickey, and Mr. Dwayne Howard for their service as, as board members to, to the district. And we also have proclamations. So if they would come, I'll have a, have proclamations I would like to read to our audience and, and recognize and hand them, hand them out.
Diane, Diane, you're going to have to give a speech.
Y'all want me to?
You'll have to introduce me to your, you'll have to introduce me to your department right there. So proclamation by the White County Board of Education. Whereas the White County School Board recognizes the invaluable contributions of its past members who have dedicated their time, energy, and talents to advancement of our, of education in our community. Whereas these individuals have demonstrated unwavering commitment to fostering a positive learning environment and advocated for the needs of our students, teachers, and families. Whereas their leadership has shaped policies and, and innovate, and the initiatives that have enriched the educational experience for all students in White County. Whereas we acknowledge the countless hours spent in meetings, planning sessions, and community outreach efforts aimed at improving our schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that the White County School Board expresses its heartfelt gratitude to all past members for their service, leadership, and passion for education. Your legacy continues to inspire current and future board members as well as the entire community. Let this proclamation serve as a reminder to the profound impact that dedicated individuals can have on the lives of students and the future of our schools. So Mr. Howard, Ms. Hasten, thank you both very much for your service and it has been a privilege to serve you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate you, appreciate y'all's service. Thank y'all. Appreciate you, uh, appreciate y'all's service.
All right. So, we will move on to our agenda to the.
Can I say something?
Uh, yes, sir, you may, Ms., Mr. McDonald, before we move on.
I just want to say thank you to Diana and Dwayne. I know Adam couldn't be here tonight, but it was, uh, it was truly a pleasure to serve with both of y'all for the last four years, and it's, uh, you know, we, we had some, we had some good times, we had some bad times, we had some ups and downs, but you know what? We made the schools in White County better, and I appreciate both of y'all for that.
Ms. Strombarger?
Yes, I would echo the same. Thank you both for, uh, for your leadership, for your guidance, for challenging me and, uh, and, and guiding me, uh, over the, over the time of your on the board. And, uh, just want to thank you for your willingness to serve. Uh, it's a, it's a job you don't get paid enough to do, and, uh, uh, it's a really a thankless job, and so, uh, but I want to say thank you both, to you both, for, for the time that you put into your families, for the sacrifice that they made on behalf of our school district, and, uh, our, our school system is better for both of your involvement. So, thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Ms. Fowler, I don't want to leave you out. We can make sure that they can hear you.
Okay, thank you, because first of all, I would like to say that, um, I hate that I could not be there tonight, but the stomach bug has hit the house, and, um.
We don't want you here.
I, I know you didn't want me there. And, um, but I don't know if Mr. Kenneth Robinson and Mr. Richard McBride's family are still there or not, but, um, I really hated that I could not be there for this because Mr. Robinson was my district. I've known that man for a very long time. He's known my family for a lot of years. And, um, very good man, um, outstanding, great job on our school board, and Mr. McBride, I knew him from outside also. And, um, I really appreciate both those men and look up to them. And I want to, Dwayne and Diana, I enjoyed working with y'all. Just like Jason said, you know, sometimes was hard and, and sometimes was laughs, but we made it through it, and it was all for the better of the children.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard, Ms. Hasten, I, I don't want to not give you the opportunity to, if there's any, any, any comments you'd like to make. You want to get, give a speech?
A few words. So, no, I, it's been a pleasure serving on this board. I want to welcome the board, welcome everyone here. I know y'all are gonna miss my, you know, my shot and stuff like that. But I really hope this board continues to be great then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Howard?
Thank you for this recognition. Appreciate the kind words. Uh, the best I could do is wish, uh, salute, saving, and the best for all our school students and teachers and parents, and especially the board. And, uh, thank you, Ms. McGill, and your counterpart here for, for being here too. So, I wish you all the best luck.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Thank you. Um, I'd just, just say it was a privilege serving with both of you. Um, felt like you both made me, as a board member, uh, better. And, uh, I think at the end of the day, I think we did accomplish a lot, when you think about it, in the four years that we served. Um, and, uh, I think if you look at some of the things that was able to have been accomplished, um, under, uh, under that, that term, I think we, I think you have, have a lot to be proud of, and I think our, our district is very, very, uh, very fortunate to have your input and your influence on, on what, uh, what takes place here at White County Schools. So, thank you, thank you both. We appreciate you. All right, so now we can, uh, we'll move on to our, our next item on our agenda. The, um, the, uh, the White County Choir has requested a fundraiser, and, uh, it, this appears to be for a concert that they are gonna be, uh, hosting on December 10th. And we're, the ticket sales would be considered fundraiser and fundraising in nature, as it would go to support that program. Uh, these ticket sales are, they are not gonna be making, uh, substantial profit from the operation, but it will help them cover the cost of things that they will be experiencing to put this event on. So, uh, that, uh, that request for, uh, for approval, uh, has risen to our, our level. It's been approved by the, uh, the principal and, uh, as it was submitted in the of October. So, um, this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of the White County, uh, Corral for their fundraising for their concert coming up in December.
Motion to approve.
Having a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Ms. Douglas. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd tell the board, this is a fundraiser that the choir did last year as well, it's a magical feast that they do, and, um, they just neglected to put it in with their submissions at the end of the summer, or the beginning of the summer last year with all the others. So, it was just an oversight, but it is one that they've done before and the board has approved.
But it is a feast concert?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Any, uh, any other comments? Okay. Hearing none, then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll come to our district update, and, uh, Mr. Strombarger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, personnel reports in your, um, are in your folders for the month. We're fully staffed at the time. Uh, we can always use more bus drivers, uh, but, uh, we are fully staffed in our classrooms at the moment. Uh, academically, our growth scores are in from last year, and they're, and testing, uh, results are looking very good. Our scores, these scores are officially called T-VOS, which is Tennessee Value Added Assessment System. Uh, and they measure how much learning growth a student, teacher, or school, or the district has had against similar districts across the state. This, the information is currently embargoed, uh, until later this month, uh, so that districts can analyze the data before it goes public. But our initial results are very positive, and White Canadians will be very proud of those results when they are released soon. Uh, we continue to work with folks from the state to defend our use of integrated math at the high school level. Uh, state continues to pressure us and other, the other two remaining districts to switch to the AGA model, which is Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II. Uh, state's focus is on logistic and testing. Our focus is on what we think is best for our White County students. And, uh, so we'll continue to kind of fight that battle. I'll give you more information as we come, as we go. But, uh, that model's been very successful for us over the years, and we're gonna push to, uh, continue using it. On November 5th, our schools were closed for Election Day, and all teachers reported for in-service training on specific topics that were targeted to their subject matter in grade bands. Uh, teachers also went through training on how students, uh, conceal vaping products in everyday household items and on their person. Uh, so, a lot of work that went into that day for training for teachers. Um, in the world of safety, lock projects continue at several schools. Our CERT safety meetings continue monthly with, uh, area first responders, and we continue to work with law enforcement, Fire Marshal's Office, and other officials to keep our school safety a top priority. Financially, uh, part of the TISA accountability model provides for outcome funding, which rewards our district for showing growth on TCAP testing with specific student groups. Uh, White County is hopeful that our promising T-VOS scores will result in additional funding for our district. In athletics, uh, White County High School Football Team won their first round playoff game last Friday night, and a second playoff, the second playoff win in school history. Uh, the team will play this Friday at Loudon High School. Will be taking a pep bus, so go Warriors. Uh, high school and middle school basketball practice has begun, and winter sports will begin very soon. Elementary basketball tournament is going on as we speak, so good luck to those folks involved in that. Uh, building projects, architects are working on designs for remodeling the current culinary arts classroom at the high school. They're also in the initial stages of the Doyle Classroom Edition drawings. Uh, we're planning a remodel of the science labs at White County High School this summer. Uh, special thanks to, uh, teacher Sarah Hallburton from White County Middle School for securing a $10,000 grant for her school, and to Principal Beth Peake at Northfield for doing the same. These grants are sponsored by the TVA as part of their energy savings initiatives. Thanksgiving break, uh, schools will be closed November 27th through 28th and 29th for Thanksgiving break. We hope everyone gets a chance to spend some time with family and friends, and also want to note, uh, put on the horizon that, uh, schools will be closed for Christmas break on December the 18th. That's, uh, a Wednesday. That's that abbreviated 9:30 a.m. day. Um, with that, that completes the director's report, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
All right, so board members, any, uh, hearing the, the, uh, district report, any, uh, comments for our director?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. McGill.
Uh, that $10,000 scholarship was for the conserving of energy at the schools, right?
Yeah, it was a, it was a grant, yes.
Uh, oh, did I say scholarship?
Yes, that is okay. I thought you, I thought you meant grant.
College move right now.
Okay.
Um, is, is that like it? So, like, only those two schools got it, or is there still continued chance?
That, that is correct for these grants, those two schools, but we've had other schools that have received it in the past, and then they can apply again moving forward. Um, in fact, the high school is working on a similar grant right now for, for science.
Yeah, they're trying really, really hard. They got it posted everywhere around the school.
Yeah, they're doing a really good job. The Science Department at the high school, they've done a really good job of presenting a proposal for the upgrading of their lab facilities. They've been very patient. We've done a little bit of, of things as we could along the way, but the, that project in earnest will start, uh, as soon as school lets out this year.
That's exciting.
Yes.
I'm excited that our students are excited about updating academic.
Well, the science stuff, like, is always cool to get the science stuff updated because, like, it's very interactive compared to all the other classrooms.
That's great to hear.
So, you're saying interactive versus literature?
I just like science.
You like science, that's great. All right. Any other questions for, comments for our director? Looking forward to seeing those, uh, scores come out for our, for our district. I think, uh, it's positive here that they're, they look, uh, look encouraging, and so, can't, can't wait to get that released out to the public and let them know just how well our, our district is performing. Any other comments? Okay, next we'll move on to our student representative report. So, Ms. Sackett or Ms. McGill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we are very excited to announce that our fundraiser for the East Tennessee flood victims of Hurricane Helene, held by the CTE and CTSO programs, was a huge success, and we were able to send two box trailers worth of goods to the victims. Myself, as well as the representative from the Ag Program, William Stockton, and Warrior Media Representative Sam Dykis played instrumental roles in our social media and campaigning for this event. We conducted several radio station interviews at the local and state level in efforts to spread news. And White County schools and our community showed up and showed out, and I believe very strongly that that reflects the hearts of our peers.
That is fantastic. You said two trailer loads?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes.
Yeah, I was hearing about that around the school.
I was like, there was donations coming in, and I was trying to head down there during, like, my second block and organize, and I was, um, when we first had the idea to organize it, I kind of thought, like, there would be a couple students bringing in donations, but even the first day that we were sitting outside of the school, there were people from the community bringing truckloads of things. It was, it was really amazing to see the community come together like that.
That is fantastic.
Yeah, I even heard people talking around the school about bringing stuff and, like, excited.
Yeah, it really was. It, it really showed you, like, our school coming together as one, so.
And you think about what you had to do to make that come together. You had to, one, come up with the idea, then, two, find out who was gonna help, who's gonna volunteer their time to, to serve, but then you had to go out and promote it. And, uh, and then you had to, to see it through. So, that's great. That's fantastic news. Thanks for sharing that.
Um, the next thing is celebrating some of the students, uh, at, the White County High School that go, uh, above and beyond each and every day. Uh, because all the s- teachers are given the opportunity to nominate, uh, a student each month that they feel applaud themselves in their classrooms and show respect to our staff, uplift their classmates, and above all, exemplify what it looks like to be a White County Warrior. The students who are given the honor of being this month's monthly Warrior are Langley Austin, Stormy Bradshaw, uh, Keon Lewis, Brody Minard, Elijah Price, Kason Seal, and S.D. Willis.
Yes. Um, also, myself, Tabitha Pope, Laney Kennard, as well as the representative from White County Middle School, serve on the Tennessee Health Student Advisory Board with two other students from the state of Tennessee. We attended a conference at MTSU to advocate for our peers and our teachers' mental health and physical health. We sat through breakout sessions to deepen our understanding of the importance of bullying prevention, breaking the stigma around speaking up about your mental health, healthy food options, physical health, and drug and alcohol abuse. We were able to take what we learned and implement it back into our schools, and at the end of the conference, we held a student panel where we were, where we were able to give, uh, Tennessee Health Advisory Council student feedback that they will be able to take and implement into school systems all over the state of Tennessee.
Wow.
Good job.
Impressive. Thank you.
Um, so, I know Mr. D mentioned this a little bit ago, but this is a really big thing, so we're, we're gonna talk about it again. Is the White County High School Football Team made it to the playoffs. That's, that's a really big thing. Like, I know that happened a couple years ago, but for it to happen so soon, I got to see it twice. And that's why I got to see it both times. Um, they, last Friday, they faced against Red Bank, and we won 31 to 6. That was pretty awesome. That was, like, the score just kept going up, and we, like, the band was sitting there. It was just like, it was, it was really cool.
Kept y'all busy, right?
Yeah, it definitely, it really does. Like, you have no idea. We're not, we, we're not even, uh, the take breaks anymore because the band has to stay there to support the football team, because they get really hyped up when the band plays.
Everybody, everybody does.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Mills is like, "All right, guys, you better eat before you come because there's gonna be no breaks. We're just, we're just here to support them." Uh, speaking of that, to so, to show their appreciation, uh, for the band's continuing support, the football team actually arranged for charter buses to take the, the marching band to the upcoming game, because we wouldn't have been able to because, like, the busing issues, because, like, they have to take the kid, the kids to their homes. We usually don't get to go to the games like this that are this far away, because we have to leave so early. But they really wanted us to come, so they bought us charter buses to come, so we're definitely really excited about that. Uh, and this Friday, we'll be going against, uh, Loudon High School. So, definitely wish your Warriors good luck for this. That's really gonna be a tough game. They, they won a lot of playoff games, so. They're gonna need, gonna get all that support in there.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Any, uh, any comments, questions for our, for our student representative's report?
Well, just the, the two that are reporting, as well as what they reported, I think our future is in really good hands.
It's got promise, doesn't it?
I hope we have, they have that much energy when they're, they're, they're houring. It won't happen.
I, I want to say, um, after this, first of all, ladies, thank you so much, your report and your involvement in your school and your participation here is fantastic. Uh, I did want to say about the busing situation, because I know, I heard there was some information out there online. I don't Facebook or associate with those that do, but I, I, I heard, I heard that there was, there was some chatter out there, but why is the school board not supplying the buses? We are more than happy to support those, those programs and, and take the, the band and the football team everywhere. We just don't have the bus drivers. We have extra buses. We don't have enough drivers. So, that was the issue, is we don't have drivers to leave so that these students can leave early and still have enough drivers to run the routes every day and get kids home from school. So, we're certainly supportive, and, uh, we are, uh, willing to run, we're running a pep bus and taking students because they can go after school hours. Um, but just wanted to stress that, that, you know, we're certainly supportive and willing to do that. But that was the reason why it wasn't as simple as just us using the school buses. But we're so thankful that the quarterback club and the community stepped up, and the football team really did. I've heard that from the parents of football players, "We need the band there because they make such a difference." And so, we're excited for the cheerleaders, the band, and for all the students who are gonna get to go support the Warriors.
That's great. That's great.
Oh, and don't, don't worry about the bus thing. It, like, they understand, like, it's, it's not.
Oh, well, I'm worried. We want you there, so we're, we're excited. It's, it's all worked out, so.
All right. Good deal. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you for that, that, uh, good report. Next, I'm our agenda's public, uh, comment, and we did not have anyone that signed up for public comment tonight. So, the next item, uh, on our agenda is our new business. Um, board members, it was, uh, brought to our attention that the White County, uh, High School Band fundraiser wishes to change one of their requests for, uh, for fundraising to the, uh, the Money Dolly. Uh, that information was provided to in your, your, um, in your packet. Uh, basically, it's an online app that, where individuals can, um, can purchase items or they can make straight donations to the organization that's, uh, part of this. And so, uh, do you recall which one, what this, what this fundraiser replaced?
It replaced, uh, Buff City Soap. They were gonna have a fundraiser with Buff City Soap, uh, so this will take that place. Um, we've done, the, the board rather has approved. We've done, the board rather, has approved similar fundraising online requests. This one is an 80/20 split. The vendor keeps 20%.
That was gonna be my question.
And so, I've looked into this a little bit. It's been used by, some of the parents have used this, of this group, of the band group have used this on other endeavors, but similar to those in which the board has approved for other organizations.
Okay. So, board members, we have this request for fundraiser changed and going to the Money Dolly, which is online, an online app for charities and nonprofits, or school fundraising. So, if it's, and as Mr. D said, is similar in nature to what we've used in the past. So, this time, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the White County Band fundraising change request from Buff City Soap to Money Dolly.
What's up, Mary?
Having a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McDonald. Any questions? Discussion?
I think he answered mine. I was gonna ask what the split was. I know there's a lot of them out there. Some are 85/15, some are 80/20, so thank you for giving that information out. I was looking, I couldn't find it on their website.
Ms. Fowler, you have any comments?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is old business, and there are no old business items, which leads us next item, which that's chairman's comments. We did, board did spend this past weekend at the TSBA conference and convention in Nashville. I appreciate all board members for your participation in that. And would also like to recognize Mr. McDonald for his being nominated as president of TSBA for this upcoming year. Mr. McDonald has served for that, as part of that oversight and board of TSBA for four years now?
Five.
Five years. For five years. And really appreciate him being willing to serve in that capacity at a state level, representing White County, because we have, there is a lot of good coming out of White County, and it's great that we're getting some recognition, and Mr. McDonald's willing to serve and represent us in this forum for people across the state.
One thing I would say, and I spoke to the gentleman, the president-elect after me, both being from rural communities and rural, you know, about the same size districts, I think it's good for these rural districts to be able to have some say and have some insight on what goes on at the state level. So, thank you, board, for allowing me in that position to be able to serve there.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, if we could, this is a big deal. I think it's a big deal for White County. I don't know that we've ever had anybody on the board, let alone be the president of TSBA. And so, you know, that puts White County out there in a great light, and I know Mr. McDonald represents us well, and I just wanna say congratulations.
Thank you. I promise not to make too much of a mockery of this board.
Well, I noticed at the meeting that they had entertainment, and so I'm already thinking about what talented students we're gonna take with us next year to represent White County.
You sure are.
You know...
We'll be calling.
The luxury that we have is, we have options. We're not just locked into only this. We have options. Maybe what we do is we just bring them all.
Absolutely.
We'll make, we'll make a night of them, so. No, that's great, and do appreciate that. This, as Mr. D said, this is a big deal for White County in getting out there and getting some notoriety, and Mr. McDonald will represent us well. So, with that, next comment is that, just a reminder, we'll be back on tour next month, December 12th. We will be at Cassville Elementary. We will have our work session at 5:00, regular board meeting at 6:00. So, with that said, brings us to item number 16, and having a motion for adjournment. Having a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion? That's good. We will consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.